We'll get started. Thank you all for joining us. Please be sure to fill out a public comment card, a speaker card, if you'd like to speak on this item, and we'll get started shortly. Thank you for joining us.
Welcome to the Valley.
Well, good evening. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to your Van Nuys City Hall. I'm Paul Krikorian, Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee and Representative of the Second Council District here in the Valley, and I'm pleased to welcome you. And along with me is the Chair of our Public Works Committee, Councilmember Joe Buscagino, and Bob Blumentfeld, Councilmember for the Third Council District in the Valley. And we may be getting some more members as we go, but we're going to go ahead and get started. This is a joint committee meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee, and we have conducted meetings like this all across the city. And this is the final stop on our tour, our road tour, to talk about sidewalks and to talk about the many policy decisions that need to be made in tackling this problem that has been brewing in Los Angeles for, well, probably for 40 years. And I think everyone here would agree that the state of our sidewalks is poor, and they are in great need of repair. I'm pleased to say that this council has, for the first time in many, many years, funded a significant commitment to sidewalk repairs. There, we have, over the last three budget years, put aside $27 million in the Sidewalk Repair Trust Fund that will be used exclusively for sidewalk repairs. Then in addition to that, the council has committed, for the next 30 years, and Mr. Santana, our CIO, will discuss this in a little bit, but over the next 30 years, the council is committed to expend $31 million a year, and that amount will escalate over the course of that 30 years, according to an inflationary formula, to sustain that effort to fix our sidewalks over the course of those 30 years. And that additional commitment is consistent with a settlement of an Americans with Disabilities Act lawsuit called Willetts versus Los Angeles, which Mr. Santana will discuss. So I want to, just first, before we get started, talk a little bit about the history of why we're here. The city clearly has not committed itself, over the last 40 years, to funding sidewalk repairs. And part of the reason for that is, of course, budgetary restrictions, but part of it also has been an inability to get a clear resolution of how that money should be expended. For almost 100 years under California state law, not within the city, but a statewide statute, the responsibility for sidewalk repair has fallen on the property owner adjacent to the sidewalks. It's very clear under state law that it is not for municipalities to do, it is for property owners to do. During the 1970s, during the Nixon administration, some federal funding was available to be able to help the city, help its property owners to make those repairs. So at that time, the city decided to adopt what was called the "street tree exception." And so the city took on the responsibility of fixing sidewalk damage that was only that sidewalk damage that was caused by the roots of a street tree. Now, the problem with that is that that was federally funded, and that federal funding ran out in about two years. And at the conclusion of that two-year time, the program was already three years backlog, because there was so much demand for this work. So the city had now taken on that responsibility, but had no funding to continue to meet that obligation. Further compounding that problem is trying to determine what damage is caused by what source. A tree that is on the property owner's property and not in the right-of-way that causes damage to a sidewalk is not a street tree. It's not subject to the exception. We have trees that were planted by a homeowner decades ago, maybe without a permit or without authorization, that are causing sidewalk damage. That further complicates the matter. And then you have, you know, the challenge of having those homeowners who have perfect sidewalks, perhaps not wanting taxpayers to bear the burden of fixing those sidewalks that are broken in front of other property owners. So we have property owner versus property owner kind of tension in that as well. So these are some of the questions that we've been trying to address, along with many, many other policy complexities in expending this money. The process will be that, at the conclusion of tonight's hearing, this joint committee will meet again. We will debate and analyze and digest all of the public input that we've gotten over the course of these meetings, and then the joint committee will make its recommendations to the full City Council for a vote, at which time you'll all have additional opportunity to weigh in and influence the shaping of this policy. But we're starting that discussion, the touchstone with which we're starting that discussion, our set of recommendations from our CIO, Miguel Santana, who's here, for the CIO's recommendations for the best, most effective ways to spend that money. These are not recommendations that this committee or the council has adopted yet, but they are a starting point for discussions, for your comment and input. And at the end of this point, we will have a comprehensive policy that will allow us to spend this money in the most effective way that we can and tackle this very vexing problem. So with that, I'd like to welcome and thank for his great partnership on this effort throughout a very challenging time in taking on this project, the Chair of Public Works for the City Council, Councilmember Joe Buscagino.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Well, you got to the root cause of the problem, and you eloquently really explained why we are here today. And I really appreciate your partnership and your leadership in working alongside our committee on behalf of the Public Works Committee, and really proud of the attendance here this evening, here at Van Nuys City Hall. This is five of five, a series of public hearings on trying to craft a policy that has failed this city 40 years ago. We, with great hope in working with the Budget and Finance Committee, that we put together a policy that's transparent, that's cost-effective, and, most importantly, that's easy to understand. And also, most importantly, the fact that, you know, once we put together a policy in place, and we have a policy in place, that we don't leave this sidewalk issue to future generations to come. And it's really proud to stand alongside my colleagues on the City Council, with the mayor as well, to tackle this big-ticket item. And yes, it did take a lawsuit, and it shouldn't have taken a lawsuit. But here we are today, and with the decisions that we're going to make moving forward, we're going to put together a comprehensive sidewalk repair program that's going to benefit everyone and to ensure that our sidewalks are accessible to each and every resident in the city of Los Angeles. So looking forward to the last five meetings. We were in Marvista on Tuesday, last night. We were in Eagle Rock, just great dialogue, great suggestions, great concerns as well that have been raised, the series of these five community hearings. So really anxious and wait to hear what you have to say on the proposal. Again, this is a proposal from the CIO's office. We are the policy decision-makers, and what Mr. Santana is going to soon present to you is a proposal, and we hope to, and to tweak this proposal. And we didn't want to make any decisions until we heard from each and every one of you, our stakeholders, neighborhood council leaders, our residents, our business owners. So thank you so much for being here and taking the time on this issue that impacts a lot of people in the city. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buscagino. And before we turn it over to Mr. Santana, I'd also like to offer an opportunity to provide a few comments to Councilmember for the Third Council District in the West Valley, Councilmember Bob Blumentfeld.
Thank you. Chairman Krikorian is the Chair of the Budget Committee. I'm proud to serve on that committee, and Chairman Buscagino as Public Works Chair. These two are doing a great job as joint chairs in leading us in this discussion, and I want to just take a moment to acknowledge that. I mean, you've been to all sides. I've gone to a couple of these, but you guys have gone to every one of these outreach hearings around the city, and I think that's really important. It's difficult choices ahead of us in terms of what to do about vexing issue of sidewalks. The one thing that I'm pleased is that everyone seems determined and decided that we are going to deal with this issue, and we're going to move forward. There's a lot of ways to move forward, a lot of different intricacies, and we're going to discuss those, and a proposal that's being put forward. But what's different this year is that there is that determination and that decisiveness that we need to take an action that'll be holistic, and that will be, may not solve the problem in the first year or two, but it's going to be a decision that will create the policy that we will use for the next 30 years or more to keep our sidewalks moving, keep people moving, and keep our sidewalks in good shape. So I just appreciate being here. I'm really glad that we're having one of these events here in the San Fernando Valley. We always need to do more hearings in the valley, so whenever we do a hearing in the valley, I want to compliment the folks who are moving the hearing in the valley, because folks in the valley need to be heard. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Blumentfeld. All right. So I think most of you know the routine, but if you would like to speak at the microphone, please fill out a speaker card like this, and bring it forward, and we'll add you to the list. Everybody will have two minutes to speak. But in addition, if you have questions that you would just like to submit to the Joint Committee or to Mr. Santana and his staff, you can just write out a question as well, and we'll try to address those written questions as well. And just bring the question cards forward as well. Do we have those cards available? They're right over here. Okay. But before we begin taking public comment, I'd like to turn the microphone over now to Miguel Santana, our CIO, who can give us an outline of the CIO's proposal that we'll be considering today, as well as some additional options that are not part of the proposal, but that might be considered if we chose to go a different way. Mr. Santana, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. It's always good to be out in the San Fernando Valley. I will be working off of a sheet here. It's a two-sided sheet, and if you don't have it with you, there's some sitting up front, in front of the door. Essentially, this is a general outline of our report. I see some of you getting up and getting it. In the back, there are two websites. If you're interested in downloading this sheet, you're welcome to do that on these websites. You could also download the report itself on the website. And as the council proceeds on having discussions around this issue, any subsequent reports will also be posted on this website. So we encourage you to go to that. So, starting from the top, this issue was first presented to my office to start addressing two years ago. Your council directed us to work with other leaders within the city to, for once and for all, establish a comprehensive approach to sidewalks. And the work, the report that's presented to you, took a couple of years to complete, and it was done in accordance to the general direction that we received from your council. The first significant direction was that the city addressed this issue once and for all, that the many years of lack of clarity of what our sidewalk approach should end, and that whatever policy is adopted should be a policy that ensures that our sidewalks are accessible, not just tomorrow or the next 10 years, but forever. And so it was critical that our policy be ongoing and permanent, to provide certainty to all Angelenos today and in the future. The second thing was that it be consistent with the Willetts settlement, and I'll talk a little about that settlement. Mr. Krikorian discussed it. It's been presented publicly. An outline of the terms of the settlement are also on the website. And essentially, this settlement is a result of litigation that was filed on behalf of the disabled community, concerned about the lack of accessibility towards our sidewalks, and provided a framework for how to proceed. The third is that this policy should ensure, first and foremost, that our sidewalks are indeed accessible, that the measurement of success is determined by the level of accessibility that our sidewalks end up being. And so the kind of materials that we use, the guidelines that we use, should result in the highest accessibility, that that is the primary purpose. And then the fourth is that there be a program that is consistent with state law, that provides clarity, once and for all, in terms of whose responsibility sidewalk maintenance is for the short term and the long term. So in summary, what our policy recommendation is, is two different approaches. For residents and properties that are for residential purposes, the city would commit to address any sidewalk that's inaccessible 100%, regardless of the reason. So if you own your home here in the valley, and your sidewalk is not accessible because of a tree or for any other reason, the city would first fix that sidewalk, ensure that it's accessible, certify that accessibility, and then that certification will be given to you as a property owner. And so we're recommending that 100% of the sidewalks that are inaccessible on residential property be, in fact, fixed by the city first. Okay? That is an important point to make. As Mr. Krikorian indicated, state law is clear that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk. That is the case in Santa Monica, in Long Beach, in Sacramento, any other part of the state, that law applies. Each city has managed that differently. And in the city of Los Angeles, while we have a tree root exemption, today, if your sidewalk is inaccessible, it's currently your responsibility as a property owner. And what we're hoping to do is achieve that clarity. On commercial property, we are proposing a different approach. And if your property is used for commercial purposes, then the city will inspect that sidewalk and certify it, if, in fact, it is accessible, based on the most rigid state and federal standards. If it is not accessible, then the city will give that property owner one year to make sure that that sidewalk is, in fact, in compliance with state and federal law. And that would ensure that, over a period of time, over a 30-year period, that all sidewalks in Los Angeles are accessible, not just for the short term, but for the long term. Now, the rest of this is designed as a basic question and answer, because I know many of you, in fact, do have questions. So in the first question, we ask, whose responsibility is it to repair sidewalks under existing state law? And we actually cite the section in state law that establishes that responsibility on all property owners. And again, that is something that applies in every city around the state. What is the city's tree root exemption? And as Mr. Krikorian indicated, in the '70s, there was a decision to make the city responsible for addressing a sidewalk that is inaccessible if the damage was caused by a street tree. And that was to take advantage of some federal dollars that, soon after, expired. And so the way the city's been managing this issue over the last few, several decades, actually, has been on an annual basis. So each year, based on our budgetary constraints, funds are committed for sidewalk repair. During good years, more funds are committed. During difficult years, no funds are committed. And so throughout the last few decades, our ongoing approach to sidewalk has been directly tied to the amount of funding available. Councilmembers, from time to time, dedicate discretionary funds that they have for specific sidewalk work in various communities. So there are some neighborhoods that do get repaired. But on a citywide basis, there hasn't been one consistent source of revenue or one consistent approach to how sidewalks are maintained. And it's for that reason that our sidewalks are the way they are. And so establishing a policy, you know, within this year, is important to ensure that we address this episodic approach and replace it with one that is ongoing and permanent. So let me talk a little about the Willetts settlement, as you may have read about. The Willetts settlement is really designed to commit the city to ensuring that sidewalks are a priority for the next 30 years. And it establishes a framework that provides a level of flexibility so that this council and future councils could adapt the program based on the needs of the community. But the absolutes in that settlement are as follows. First, it commits the city to spending $1.4 billion over the next 30 years for sidewalk repair. And any activity that relates to addressing the inaccessibility of our sidewalks can be used under this settlement, so we could draw on that $1.4 billion. The second thing is that our approach to this work has to be, in fact, transparent, and it has to be accountable to all of you, and particularly the disabled community, who are the plaintiffs in this lawsuit. And so what that means is that we are committed to having a public website. That website will ensure that there's information that provides an explanation of how the city is doing this work, where that work is being prioritized, what work has been completed, and how we're meeting the terms of the settlement on an ongoing basis. And that website is currently being developed, and we have about, by the end of this fiscal year, to put together. The third thing is that there has to be a component of whatever policy is adopted that is responsive to specific complaints in the disabled community. We all have neighbors and friends and family members who have difficulty leaving their homes and going to their place of employment, or going to school, or coming here, or wherever it is that they choose to go. And so because this lawsuit was brought about by advocates for the disabled, the city is, in fact, committing to be responsive to that community in a very specific way. And so as part of the program, there is a fund dedicated specifically to ensuring accessibility to the disabled community. The fourth piece is that, because Los Angeles has the largest network of sidewalks in the country, and because this is a problem that even we don't know the scope of, the way we are prioritizing focuses on those areas that have the highest use, as well as those sidewalks that we know, or will soon know, are what we're calling "the worst of the worst." And I'm sure all of you, as residents, could think of which sidewalks those would be in your own neighborhoods. These are sidewalks that are clearly inaccessible, and over time have been patched, and those patches are no longer working. And so it was very important, both for the city and for the plaintiffs, that the resources that get dedicated for this program go to addressing those sidewalks first. And so over time, we'll be going, our goal is to reach the entire city, but focusing on those that have the greatest amount of use and are sort of what we're calling "the worst of the worst." And then finally, we are also committed to ensuring that whatever approach we pursue, that we're doing so in a cost-effective manner, that we're maximizing these dollars to ensure that we get the biggest bang for our buck. And so our public discussion around the program has to discuss how, in fact, this is the most cost-effective way of proceeding forward. Now, let me tell you what's not in the settlement, okay? What's not in the settlement is how the work is done, whether it's contracted or done by city employees. What's not in the settlement is the kind of materials that are used. You know, there are very specific standards, federal and state standards, to ensure accessibility, and those standards will change over the next 30 years, and the city is committed to having the most rigid standards. But the technology itself is also evolving. You know, if someone comes up with a more environmentally sound approach to a sidewalk, the city has the flexibility of pursuing that approach as long as it meets the accessibility standard set by the federal and state government. And so it was important, both to the city and to the plaintiffs, that the settlement not limit how the work is done and what kind of materials are used to do the work. Also not included in the settlement is the larger policy questions, such as the one that we just, I presented earlier, on how we approach residential versus commercial. Those are all questions and decisions that have to be made by the council and the mayor. And of course, because this is a long-term program, again, over the next 30 years, those decisions may change over time, based on the response that the community presents, based on whatever new technology surfaces, based on changes in the economy. So, and what, the other important thing to understand, the most important part of the Willetts settlement, is that because the city is entering into an agreement with a third party, a contractual agreement, a settlement, it is establishing that, no matter what's going on in the city, if we encounter a recession, like the one we just got out of, which all of you remember, sidewalks will continue to be a priority. The city will be committed to spending the equivalent of $31 million, regardless of what's happening. There's one small clause that allows it, in the event of, you know, a major event, you know, a big earthquake or some other major event, for us to approach the court about changing the terms. But overall, sidewalks are being put in front of the line of priorities for the city in this, with this dollar commitment. Now, when, based on the flexibility that the settlement provides in terms of how this work is done, the council directed us to look at a number of options. And in our report that you'll find on our website, we talk about what are the scope of options that the city could pursue, and then how does this approach, the one we're recommending, fit into the scope of options? So let me talk about what are those options not being recommended at this time. The first is an approach that exists in many cities around the country, and that is that the city simply acts as an enforcement agency. The city approaches every property owner, inspects their sidewalk, and determines whether it's accessible or not. And in some cities, you receive a notice that your sidewalk is inaccessible, and you're given a period of time to fix that sidewalk. And then a series of fines and penalties happen if you don't meet that. The city, my office is recommending a different approach for residential, where we take on that responsibility initially, before certifying a sidewalk and handing that certification to property owners. The other approach is a point-of-sale, and that is, if you, once you sell your property, that as a requirement in escrow, that your sidewalk be certified as accessible. Some cities do this. That requirement exists for other issues, such as ensuring that your water heater is properly secured in case of an earthquake, and other basic requirements like that. The city is, my office is not recommending a point-of-sale program at this time, but future councils may consider that. They have the flexibility to pursue that. The other is point of permit. If you choose to make a major investment on your property that requires you to issue a city permit, some cities require that your sidewalk also be accessible at that time. If you look around major developments in commercial If you look around major developments in commercial areas, you often find that their sidewalks are the most accessible, in part because when those developments were put in, the city required that they ensure that their sidewalks are fully accessible. That is why in commercial areas oftentimes are much more accessible than they are in The other is a program that the city has done in the past, which is a 50/50 program or a different kind of ratio, where we commit to pay for half of the cost of a repair, and the property owner commits to pay for the other half, or whatever other ratio is determined at that time. Again, what my office is recommending is that for residential property, that the city take on 100% of that cost to repair the sidewalk prior to it being certified. And then the, the other two are, of course, a program where the city would take on 100% of all sidewalks, including commercial areas and residential, not just the first time, but always. And that is of course the most expensive option for the taxpayers, because ultimately the city would have to cover the cost on an ongoing basis. And so it would be subject to annual budgetary decisions like the ones that we've experienced in the past. And so that's, a future council could choose to do that. The 31 million dollar commitment that's in the Willet settlement is exactly that, but it also doesn't limit whether in the future the city may choose to spend more. And in fact, future councils may decide, we want to bond against that 31 million, borrow a significant amount, and then get the work done faster. There's nothing in the settlement that prohibits that. And then the final one is of course the one that we're recommending, which we're calling fix and release, where the city would commit to fix the sidewalk for residential, and then certify it and hand that certification to property owners. Now going to this, back to this, to the back of our sheet, what do other cities do? We did a survey of cities at Eddie, you know, a number of cities around the country. We've looked at what reports have done, and we've seen that based on a survey of eighty-two cities in forty-five states, the majority of the cities share the financial responsibility with the property owner in some way. And so in our, in our website, we talk about the various approaches, and, and certainly you could, we, we provide the citation, so you could read this, this study yourself if you're interested. So to summarize again what our recommendations are, the first is to reestablish a sidewalk repair program consistent with the Willet settlement. The second is to clarify within the city family who's ultimately responsible for ensuring that that program is fully implemented. And so we're recommending, and in fact, the council has already acted, to assign that responsibility to the Board of Public Works. We're fortunate to have the board president here, Kevin James, whose responsibility it is to oversee the rollout of that program. In the current budget we have today, the city has committed 31 million dollars for sidewalk repair, and consistent with the Willet settlement, the sidewalks that are being repaired are those that surround city buildings, to ensure that every city's building, whether it's owned by the city, the DWP, the airport or the harbor, or, or within our, our Parks Department, that every city sidewalk is in fact accessible to, to allow the public access to their government. And so the, the program today is ensuring that accessibility. And that was something that the, the plaintiffs insisted, that because clearly sidewalks around city property are in fact 100% the responsibility of the city. In the same way, properties around the school district, properties around county property, properties owned by the state, they have a responsibility to maintain their sidewalks because they are under the same obligation under the ADA. The, the third point is that we clarify that the, the responsibility consistent with state law is ultimately that of the property owner, but, but on residential property, the city will first fix the sidewalk before reassigning that responsibility to that owner. We are also recommending that we maintain a, a transparent tracking system to monitor and report on the sidewalks that are, are being repaired, the sidewalks that are projected to be repaired, with a timeframe and, and certainty. We also are committed to appointing an expert, someone who understands the ADA with very specific qualifications, who could ensure that we are consistently in compliance with state and federal law. And we're also committing that we will provide for property owners a list of certified vendors, vendors who have been trained under the regulations of the ADA, who have received a city certification that US property owners can access to ensure that who you hire to commit this work is in fact done in compliance with the standards that are expected, that are required. And the reason why that's important is because the city also certifies that work, and if we trust the people who are doing it, it becomes much more cost-effective for us in that process. And then the final point is that we maintain our commitment to an urban forest. We all know that a big reason why sidewalks are inaccessible is because trees have, tree roots have caused the damage. And, you know, we should all make sure that we never plant ficus trees anymore, because unfortunately they're the, the worst of the worst in terms of the trees that cause that damage. But consistent with the policies that the Board of Public Works has adopted, the city will ensure that for every tree that's removed, we replace that tree not just once, but twice, and in some cases more than that, depending on the kind of tree that has been removed. And that, and that we do everything we can for mature trees to protect them. But ultimately, if, if we cannot maintain accessibility, then in fact, that tree will need to be removed. So with that, we'll be, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have that are, that are coming to us, and then turn it over to the chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santana. So again, if you'd like to provide comment, please fill out one of these cards. If you'd like to submit a written question, you can do that as well, and we'll try to categorize those and then answer them as best we can in a group when we're done hearing from the, from the public. So our first speaker will be Jim Comper, followed by Tom Grant.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Good to see you, Councilman. Saw you on HBO the other night, riding your bike in Amsterdam. I'd like to start off by saying really appreciate that the city is stepping up to deal with this problem, even though a lawsuit was what forced us to deal with it. I've been a homeowner for 25 years, and for 25 years I've had a sidewalk that's been torn up by a tree that was put in before I was born, and the city would say, A, we will fix the sidewalk, and B, don't touch it, we will deal with it. I have a letter in my pocket from 2002 where the city was saying, next year, next to be, have your house, your sidewalk repaired. Didn't happen. So I do appreciate, and I'd like to see the site and release, whatever you call the program, the idea of you repair the sidewalk once becomes our responsibility. I think you have to think about the trees, you mentioned that, and you can't just take out the trees and cut, or take out the sidewalk and cut the roots. With our tree, I think you have to take the whole thing out, so that's a big deal. Trees are also going into our streets. So I think about the next thirty years, and where is the city going to be in terms of its streets and its sidewalks? Are we going to have as many cars on the road? Probably not. I, I don't think my children, their friends are really that interested in automobiles, you know, or need it as much as we do. So I think a lot of situations, we could probably lose sidewalks in some residential areas. You know, already in parts of the valley, you have streets where there are no sidewalks, and people walk in them all the time. Friday nights in Sherman Oaks, you're extra careful, you don't want to have any problems with folks going to temple. So I think even though the lawsuit may restrict you in terms of what you have to plan, in terms of thinking, well, you have to repair sidewalks, whoo! I'm just saying, think about the options, including water capture, improving the streets so they're more accessible to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speaker is Tom Grant, followed by Jules Fear. Mr. Grant, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Obviously, this is the, the most recent example of the city policy being dictated by the courts, you know, that's been preceded by telling the police department that we have to change our hiring practices, or that we have to stop putting our sewage in the ocean. So in this example, as it says in the CAO report, it's, the city's priority now is supposed to be the sidewalks. And in fact, the, the street trees that are causing the problem are supposed to be part of the city infrastructure, and the city council adopted a policy that gives the street trees equal footing with sidewalks, or with fire hydrants, or with street, streetlights. And so that's being totally ignored, and I think that's really, you know, kind of problematic. The other thing is that the, the plan that fixes sidewalks at city costs and then turn the responsibility over to the property owners for future damage, I think any property owner would be foolhardy to ever have a street tree put in front of his, his house again. I mean, he's just asking for trouble. And in fact, right now, the city, when it, when it needs to plant trees, cannot find property owners that will consent to having a tree planted in their front yard. It's a huge problem. So when the, when the city discusses having two trees planted for one, and these aren't real trees, these are little saplings, there's no place to put them. There, there's yards full of them. Tree People doesn't know where to plant them. Northeast Trees doesn't know where to plant them. Also, the reference is, you know, nicely made that we ought to give an effort to preserving the street trees, but, but you're charging urban forestry with, with doing that, and the city budget has relegated urban forestry to almost a nonexistent division in Bureau Street Services. So there is an, an organization called CFAC, Community Forest Advisory Committee, and it's under the auspices of the Board of Public Works. Can I continue?
Finish the thought, sir.
It's, it's under the auspices of the Board of Public Works, and it's made up of sixteen members, one appointee from every single council office and one from the mayor's office. And it's a huge resource, and it's one I think that shouldn't be overlooked at all.
Great.
So.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is the mayor of Sherman Oaks, the Honorable Jules Fear, who will be followed by Joanne Dantonio.
Hello, Councilman. Thank you very much for allowing me to spend a few minutes up here. I've spent over twenty years in Sherman Oaks, working with tree problems, sidewalk problems, et cetera. A couple of issues that I'd like to ask you about, one is, when you repair the sidewalks in a commercial district, specifically, will you be doing the curbs as well? Because so many of the curbs are crumbling, and it poses a danger for people getting out of cars and tripping over them. So I'd like you to consider that should be part of the sidewalk repair. Also, in the commercial district, now I'm specifically talking about Sherman Oaks, the alleys are in terrible, terrible condition, and so many of the businesses have their valet parking in the back of their businesses, especially restaurants, and we have so many of them, because there's no parking available anywhere else. And people, it, it's like a minefield driving through the alleys. What are you going to do about that? I hope that will be taken care of somehow in your budget. I can tell you that twenty years ago, we planted three miles of trees along Ventura Boulevard from Fulton to Sepulveda, and those trees were all authorized by the city, and so many of them have just created havoc on the sidewalks, including the palm trees, which you should also put on your no, no planting list, because they're terrible. So these are some of the things I wanted to point out to you. I thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes to speak to you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Jules. Our next speaker is Joanne Dantonio, followed by Chuck Betts. Good evening.
Hi. This is in such contrast to Mayor Viegosa's Million Trees, and my, my, and I speak as someone who's actually fallen on these sidewalks, and my knee still hurts. But on the other hand, the beauty of our city is going to really leave if we allow people to make decisions based on what's it going to cost them in the future if we don't completely take out the tree. And as a resident with two beautiful liquid ambers across the street from me that have been already over-trimmed and are not so beautiful, but they are raising the sidewalk, what's going to happen? I mean, the view in front of my house is going to be gone, because I'm sure those neighbors are going to say, take them out. And when we have commercial areas that are not that beautiful in this area, it's going to be even worse when the trees are gone. There are 900 trees due to be cut. There are hearings going on right now in the Neighborhood Sustainability Alliance, the list is, is posted, and I printed it out today, and many of the hearings have already happened, and many of the trees are being removed for street repair. So what is going to be the guideline for urban forestry so that they don't ruin the look of this city? I mean, it's already going downhill. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chuck Betts, followed by Sarah Mitchell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone uses the sidewalks. I think the city doing, repairing the sidewalks makes everybody pays, pay for them. However, that may not be the right way to do it because of state law, but I think everyone should pay for their share for the sidewalks. Question I have is, are the permits that we're going to have to take out, are they going to be a profit-making thing for the city, or will they only cover the costs of the city? I'm, I'm glad to hear that the city is going to determine trees that don't make problems for the sidewalks. And I think my question, my third question is going to be answered. We are going to be allowed to use private contractors, not city employees. My last thing is, is that there are so many things in this city that have been neglected for so long. The water mains, the streets, the sidewalks, the tree trimming, and now we're trying to catch up on the fifty years that nothing was done. And so that's putting a, a big burden on, on everyone to try to get all that stuff done at one time. So I don't know how long you're going to spread this out over, but I think you need to consider that also, because people can't afford all that expense at once.
Thank you, Chuck. Just really quickly, Mr. Santana, can you respond to Mr. Betts's question about permit fees?
Certainly not. The council has already established that while a permit is required to repair a sidewalk, there would be no fee associated to that permit.
And that is the case now, actually. So if you wanted to repair your sidewalk, as Mr. Buscagno just did, actually, tell us about that, Mr. Buscagno.
That was, thank you. So we took a sidewalk 101 lesson. I had a tree root that was buckling the sidewalk in front of my property, but it was a tree on private property. So trees that are on private property, it's the responsibility of the property owner to maintain the sidewalk. Now, I was able to pull an aid permit, and I was, I led the, the effort to waive all fees related to sidewalk repair, because we felt, I felt, we felt as a council, that if you're going to make the investment in the infrastructure in front of your home, you shouldn't be charged $350. So that the aid permit, dumping fees, of course, labor, and two yards of concrete. So that the A permit, dumping fees, of course, labor, and two yards of concrete, was about a $1,000 repair in front of my home. And that was quite an experience and quite a lesson, to really walk through the entire process.
Our next speaker is Sarah Mitchell, followed by Melanie Winter.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Sarah Mitchell. I'm with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. We represent one of the 400 businesses in the San Fernando Valley. A few years back, VICA did support a sidewalk repair proposal that would have put the obligation to repair on the property owners. My understanding is a lot of our members begrudgingly supported it, but decided that it was the only way that these sidewalks were actually going to be repaired. But this time around, our members are extremely concerned with the fact that the city council is pursuing two very contradictory initiatives that have to do with sidewalks. First, we're hearing that when it comes to our 50,000 street vendors, that the sidewalks are public space, and in event of a legalization of these street vendors, that the city would be able to authorize having these street vendors on these sidewalks. But tonight, we're hearing that fixing these exact same sidewalks is the commercial property's responsibility. We are just asking that you reconcile that these two conflicting parts before you move forward on either of the two policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melanie Winter, followed by Tricia Robbins-Casson.
I'm Melanie Winter. I'm the founder and director of The River Project and a member of the Green L.A. Coalition. I'm also someone with personal experience of struggling to navigate the city's sidewalks in a wheelchair for about a year, so I am very pleased to see a plan for medial action taking shape. We have an unprecedented opportunity to maximize these investments in our sidewalks. They can be rebuilt to serve multiple functions and meet multiple goals beyond just ADA requirements, including compliance with MS4 permits, sustainability plan goals, and the city's stormwater management goals. The CAO's report references Council Motion 14-0163, which directs the Bureau of Engineering to develop design and construction standards for sidewalks that serve the city's objectives to increase groundwater recharge and stormwater management, among other things. However, these objectives are not addressed in the CAO's set of recommendations. These objectives can be addressed by including sanitation, DWP, and other NGO partners who have piloted innovative designs, like Parkway basins and swales, that address these objectives and other goals, and allow trees to grow their roots downward rather than upheave sidewalks. Councilmember Fuente's motion 14-0748 on stormwater management guidelines should be coordinated with these efforts moving forward to allow us to maximize our investments. We're concerned that the policies not threaten our tree canopy in the city, and it's critical to leverage this opportunity to change our street tree list to make it more drought tolerant and climate appropriate. And we need to develop practices that, and policies, that allow us to implement stormwater Parkway basins and swales without paying significant fees. So a no-fee permit structure for these would be helpful as well. Lastly, I want to just really say I'm excited about developing a GIS-based inventory of sidewalks, and I encourage you to include Parkway widths in that GIS inventory while you're at it, to save time and money, because these Parkway widths, Parkways are, that are adjacent to our sidewalks, are critical acreage real estate in the city that can help us meet numerous goals, and we need to use them wisely. So integrating these numerous efforts that are going on at the same time can really save us a lot moving forward and give us maximum benefits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also want to take a moment to recognize that Councilmember Paul Corretz is here with us, as well as Councilmember David Rue. Thank you both for being with us. Our next speaker is Tricia Robbins-Casson. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, evening. Thank you so much for tackling this issue now. It's an extremely important one, and one that's been put off for some time for a good reason. And I very much appreciate that you're going around the city and getting everybody's input and finding a solution that's implementable. Thank you. So I had a few comments just in thinking through. I was looking at Mr. Santana's report from May 26, 2015. And while I'm pleased to see that there's a recommendation in there that the Bureau of Street Services find a way to streamline tree removal processes, it's very important. I just went through this for one of my clients, and it took about six months, and that was with a lot of follow-up on my part, to make sure that it moved forward in a timely fashion. And if the commercial properties really only have about one year to go ahead and deal with all of this, it would be great if the permits could come more quickly, so that they may go ahead and finish everything within that timeframe. My second comment just had to do with our more vulnerable residents. I wanted to, I'm glad that, and looking through the report, that the city is paying for it for a number of years, in terms of coming in and taking care of those properties that have been cited and that haven't rectified the situation within a year. However, I am wondering, after that period is up, what happens then? Does that fee that they are required to pay, because the city has now gone ahead and taken care of that, does it become a lien on their property? And, you know, how do they deal with that thereafter? The third thing I wanted to mention is, in terms of the set of standards for the A permit, while I was doing that tree removal and sidewalk replacement for my client, I was looking through that set of standards. And, you know, I'm generally able to read things and understand them, and I was having a little bit of difficulty with that. So I would recommend, I'll finish my thought. I would recommend that you have either staff that's dedicated to help people work through that, or you create some materials that are a little bit more clear and easy to comprehend, so that people can comply with the A permit process and finish it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, Lisa Sarkin, followed by Tutt Hayes. Lisa, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council. We haven't decided on any of this yet, of course, since we're not ready. But I have four questions that I think have to, have to come into the whole play of this. So I've heard from many agencies, many departments, that lots of times, there's ordinances that come out of the city council, and there's really no budget to enforce it. Enforcement is everything. So even if we have some kind of recommendation, and we start fixing the sidewalk somehow, there has to be somebody that's going to enforce exactly the way, where the money goes. How are the sidewalks going to be designed? For the Ventura-specific plan, two years ago, $163,000 was allocated out of the trust fund for sidewalks that are not even in the specific plan area, and nothing has ever been done about that. So I fear that that's what's going to end up with this. Some department's going to be supposedly designing the thing, and it'll never get out. So I'm going to talk to Kevin about our sidewalks later on, because I thought there was going to be public comment today, and I was going to bring that up. But I think that's an important thing. How long is it going to take for whatever department it is to design the sidewalk? Because they're not just going to be slopped down, obviously. So once you get the ordinance, I'm sure our neighborhood council will have something to say, and I'll be back after that. Thanks so much.
Good. We look forward to continuing this discussion with our neighborhood councils once we get closer to crafting the policy. Mr. Hayes, welcome.
In a republic such as ours, if people are pleading and begging for the people who they brought in office to be kind, and generous, and noble, and use their consciousness, they deserve the kind of government that they have. They brought the government in office, they can take the government out. It's called recall. So that's the policy. That's the plan that I and my colleagues tend to initiate. When we go door to door, indicating that the tree that has to be cut, the sidewalk that has to be replaced is going to cost you $10,000, the business committee and the residential community are going to fund the recall effort for everyone of you who have voted on this. Now, it kind of snowballed. You may think it's silly. Recall, when's the last time this ever taken place? Well, this, I think it's an issue that deserves it. It's also a fact, you can't cut a tree unless you get a permit to do that. You can't cut an oak tree down at all in this city. So they have settled with having to get an arboretianist to get the tree taken care of, scientifically and medically, it's a living organism, and also what it's going to cost to get a contractor to put in the sidewalk. I'll show you some instances where people have done it on their own. Turbo job. But you are out of office if you proceed with this. The mayor went and asked for $2 billion to restore the LA River, so ducks can swim and play, and some white boy can paddle down in a canoe or a kayak. $2 billion? Are you out of your mind? No, you're just mean and cruel. That's why you allowed the Crenshaw Line to be at grade to cure my people going down Crenshaw. You know a train on the ground will kill. It'll be derailed when it hits cars. USC points that out. Thank you, gentlemen.
Lisa Cahill.
Thank you, Lisa, for joining us.
Thank you so much. It's a hard act to follow. Hi, I'm Lisa. I work for Tree People. I'm the Director for Sustainable Solutions, which is basically public watershed education. Also serve on my neighborhood council and the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance. My daughter also takes advantage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, so I'm kind of looking at this at all angles. I actually started with Tree People as a volunteer citizen forester, and then that was my first job at Tree People, helping people in Los Angeles plant trees in the Parkway's. And so I know a lot about the right tree in the right place. And what our city has a lot of is the wrong tree in the wrong place. And so this issue's come down, I've seen a lot of emails on it, that it's trees versus sidewalks, or one issue versus another. We don't really see it that way at all at Tree People. We see it as an opportunity, and we're really excited about it. So echoing what Melanie was talking about, this is such an amazing chance for our city to really take the outdated 21st, or 20th century infrastructure and shift it into 21st century infrastructure. And so what we're asking for is transparency in the tree ratios, so that when they are replaced, we're making good, oh goodness, half a minute, we're making good choices about those ratios and the eco-benefits of the trees. Additionally, we're asking for, we really look at those things, like curb cuts, like bio-swales, so we're making smart choices, so that we have, when people look at what we did here, what you guys did, what we all are a part of, they go, wow, those people had their act together. They made some really top-notch decisions. And it makes us look a little bit better than Portland. And that's what I'm personally going for. So anyway, thank you so much for your time this evening. And there's a lot of great organizations, not just Tree People, but Water L.A., CFAC, that somebody else brought up this evening, and I urge you to just, I look forward to the opportunity to continue the discussion. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Jeff Jacobberger. Jeff, welcome.
Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, and thank you all for your hard work on this difficult issue. I just have a quick question about the city repairing sidewalks in front of residential property costs. Is that only single-family residents, or does it apply to multi-family as well? To both?
I'll address that in a second. I'll be happy to address that.
Okay. Because my concern is, if it's only single-family, I mean, then you're only fixing sidewalks in front of, you know, a small, you know, less than half of the people who live here in the city of Los Angeles. And if you look at, you know, landlords will be wanting to pass on those costs to their tenants any way they can. We have a housing affordability crisis, and we'd really be burdening, you know, the people who are least able to pay, rather than those who are most able to pay. I also think there's an equity issue, and that many people don't have sidewalks in front of their houses, and the city is, and so on. Those streets, people are forced to walk in the street, whether they're able-bodied or disabled. And so, you know, I'd just like to see some sort of equity analysis in terms of, if the city is going to be subsidizing them, you know, are you subsidizing them for lower-income people who can't afford to fix their sidewalks, or people who live in houses in neighborhoods with $2 million homes, who very easily can afford the amortized cost of 40 or 50 bucks a year for a new sidewalk? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Maria Dennis?
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for having this.
Thank you for joining us.
Okay, you're welcome. I'm glad you're doing this, because I do thank you for being transparent, and also being able to understand all the procedures and the organization, the way the handout is. Two things. Well, how could I report a street and a house that, I'm not a resident in that house, but I live across the other street, and I take a walk, and I love walking down the street, but there's this, two big humps of sidewalk that need repair. So will I be able to?
Yes, through the 3-1-1. You call 3-1-1. It's important to.
Okay, and I can show the picture, yeah, because it looks similar to the one.
Or if you have an app on your phone.
Yeah, no, I did. I mean, but it's similar to the one that's on the website announcing tonight, so just like that. And that's where I fell, you know? And then, will there also be some time to consider for sidewalks, like he mentioned? That there might be sidewalk, and then there's no sidewalk, and then there's sidewalk. And it's so dangerous, because especially when it rains, there's puddles, you go out to the street, you can get run over, or, like in similar case, get splashed, you know, anyway. So will there in the future be consideration to that type of concern and problem? Or rebate for people to help out, just the way they did it for the lawn things? Okay? So thank you so much.
Thank you. Herman?
Should we say that a public pedestrian sidewalk or pathway is not a part of a network for anyone and everyone to be circulating? Should I say that the circumstances that this city has created in the last 50 years is racist and discriminatory towards people, individuals with disability, like Mr. Santana brought out in his comments, for the reason why we, the people, brought this lawsuit, Woltz versus Los Angeles, Herman versus Hazard Park? How do you like that? Because you allowed a K-rail to sit on a public sidewalk for 10 years, Jose Weisar, you fat bald punk. And yet, you sit here squabbling to these people about the good things you planned to do with the millions of dollars that should have started 50 years ago. And now these implements and ideas of coursing us to believe that it's going to become something better, doesn't meet my standard, because I go by the standards that I always advocated for, disabled people and the elderly, like the poor lady brought up, how she fell and tripped. My own 80-year-old mother walks and drives. She's afraid to come to LA, trip, slip, and fall. That's why she moved away, so she don't have to see Mr. Bloomfield's funny-looking face.
Stick to the item.
I am talking about the item.
Stay on it.
Joe Blow.
Stay on it.
You can sidewalk, because you make $200,000 a year, and you.
Stay on the item. Okay, his time is forfeited. Mr. Spindler? You're not speaking on the item. Thank you so much. Sergeants, please, see him to the seat. Thank you. You're not speaking on the item. Have a seat. Sit down. Wayne Spindler, please. He can start his time.
So you're going to take five seconds away from me, are you?
Please, you're disrupting the meeting.
You cannot regulate speech. You cannot regulate speech. But that's what you do. You rule by campaign donations.
Stick to the item, please.
You're going to place this program in the Department of Public Works? You know what I saw today in the Ethics Commission? Kevin James, $560,000 of campaign donations from everybody. And you're going to place him in charge of this program?
Stick to the item, please.
So I'm going to stick to the fucking item. I don't want to pay for your sidewalks. They're your sidewalks. I didn't buy them. I didn't purchase them. I didn't lease them. They were there, and I didn't buy them. I checked my deed. It's not there. I checked my ESCO instructions from 30 years ago. My daddy bought the house. It's not there. So how can you make me pay for something to fix something broken that I don't own? How can you do that? You can't. You can't. It's a civil right not to be discriminated against, because you think a commercial property owner is a rich Jew with deep pockets. And it's offensive. And yet, somebody living in an $8 million residential home. And yet, somebody living in an $8 million residential home is going to get free sidewalk repair, while people living in South Central in a multi-unit home have to pay higher rents to fix your sidewalks. That's what they're talking about. No. No. No.
Lorraine, no last name? Welcome, Lorraine. Thanks for joining us.
Hi there. I noticed I made some notes while you were talking, and how many years did the city have no budget for sidewalk repair? That's one question I have. And the valley is 1.6, 1.7 million, and I think the city is 4 million and some. So basically, the valley is about 40%, 35, 40% of the population. What are the statistics of the sidewalks that will be repaired in the valley? Because the valley is a higher percentage of residential. And I know that you said in here that without a knowledge of the scope of the project, you don't know what you're complying with on the settlement. So I find that curious. But what was most alarming, which was slipped through, well, actually, let me go back to the Ficus issue. That was from 1984. The Ficus trees were planted in preparation of the Olympics to clean the air in the city. And that's why they were the most efficient trees. That's why they were planted. And I know America City is planning to bid for us to behead the Olympics in 2024, so how much of the sidewalk project will be geared towards those areas that will be used for the Olympics? And my other question is, what was most alarming is that you said the little tiny four-letter word that was bond, that you were considering a bond against the $31 million to accelerate the repair. A bond is a tax. That's all it is, is a tax. So basically, you took a bad situation, which you never fixed, the streets, the sidewalks, and I don't mean small. I mean, there are sidewalks in the valley that are exactly that high, that they're that lifted from the trees, that have not been fixed. Just a conscience would have fixed it. So now you're going to take a bond? So whether the people have to pay for them as a split with what these people are upset about, the bond is going to cost a tax with interest. So my question is, how are we going to determine whether or not that bond will go through? And will that delay the fixing of the sidewalks?
Thank you so much. Maybe on the item as well. We have a few more speakers here. Marilyn Mabet, followed by Richard Higginson and Elaine Trugman. Marilyn?
Hi. Four years ago, we were living in Woodland Hills, and a tree, huge tree, fell down in the street. I called the city, because we have an elementary school, and they said there was no budget for them to come and do anything. So I called the fire department. They came out. They couldn't do anything. Then we called the supervisor. They were out by morning. We are now near, we moved, and we're now near another, two elementary schools, a private and public. Our sidewalks are so bad, they're like, they took tar, the city did, I guess, and tarred them over. So there's no way that any disabled person, they're about 16 to 18 inches, can get over either of these humps. It's off of DeSoto and Woodland Hills. So my sister and I took pictures. We have a website. We got today, since your fiscal website won't start till next year, and it's fixthesidewalks.com. We'll start posting different areas that need repair now for the disabled. That's it.
Thank you. Richard Higginson?
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I'm not talking about myself. I live in a middle-class area in the Northeast Valley, but about half the people are broke out there. If you order people to take money and to fix something, $1,000, and penalize them, I guess they'll just be penalized. At some point, now or in the future, you order people to do it, I can afford it, but some people clearly can't, from my perspective. You need a list of contractors who will charge a fair plot price, whatever, this is not gouge people who have to pay for these things. In 2002, I obtained a location in Westchester, just north of the airport, and as many of you are probably aware, Sepulveda sidewalks are a mess. We're a mess on both sides of the street, north of Manchester, for about a half mile to a mile. There was a ballot measure several years ago that the people in that area turned down to fix it. Nevertheless, they've been slowly improved, but they were a huge mess. People rarely walk there, but they were a real bad condition, and they're slowly being improved, so it's possible. And I've read about these problems in the Daily News and the Times for many years. And it's just curious that it takes so long to rectify things and make it better. And I don't know what's best. If there's a bond issue, everyone has to pay for it, the people have money. But on Sepulveda, north of the airport, I think it's a commercial consideration. In Palmdale and many locations, the people who care about the city don't want travelers to see a mess, you know, as there was on Sepulveda, just north of the airport, because many thousand people use the LA International Airport, and we just don't want people visiting our city to see a mess, and there are safety issues and such. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Trugman? Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Hi. I'm, I live around here, and I'm from, I've worked for the Sierra Club as a volunteer for about 11 years. And I just want, I'm representing trees. I'm all for fixing the sidewalks, but I have a problem if you're going to cut down a really beautiful tree that gives a lot of shade. My feeling is that we can go around that tree for just, you know, even if we have to just walk in the street for a few minutes and then come back. And I understand, we're talking about the disabled person now, on a wheelchair, and I'm all, I understand their problem. The only problem I say is, if the disabled want to fix things, they need to ask the city to put sidewalks in half of the neighborhoods here. There are no sidewalks. The disabled people have to use the roads for blocks and blocks and blocks, because there's no sidewalks at all. So why persecute a wonderful shade tree and cut it down because it's cutting up the sidewalk a little bit? You just go around in the street for a few minutes and come back. I don't know if I made my point. I think I'll just keep talking until I'm pushed out here. I'm saying that we need to put sidewalks where there are none now, because I use some of those streets, and the people in the dark are walking their dogs in the dark on the streets. That's very dangerous. And so this is what I really want. And if you put sidewalks where there are none now, then I'm willing to let you cut down a wonderful tree that's breaking up a little bit of a sidewalk somewhere else. I'm an advocate for trees for two reasons, because they give shade to people, and also they, okay, bye.
Thank you. Sharon, last name with an R? Romano. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Romano. I'm with the Los Angeles Beautification Team. We have been planting trees in the city for over 23 years, and we've been implementing stormwater capture and conservation programs for the last eight years. I also sat on the CFAC for five years. And I came tonight because, obviously, you are all under great stress to find a good solution for the complex problem that we have here with the disability issues and the liability issues of our sidewalks. But when I read the CLA's report, I was very disturbed by two things. Number one was the omission of any thought to incorporate onsite stormwater capture into this major infrastructure program. I would think that that would be in our consciousness all of the time with everything that we attempt to do now. Secondly was the language with regard to trees, because this is going to have a major impact on our urban forest. And as someone who has been planting our urban forest for two and a half decades, I am very concerned about that, because for many years, quite frankly, we have not shown the respect for the urban forest and the environmental benefits the urban forest provides for us, the respect it deserves. The urban forestry department doesn't receive the respect it deserves. Within Public Works, if it's a tree versus concrete, the concrete always wins. And I am very concerned about how this program is going to move forward and being implemented. It needs to be implemented in a cost-effective manner, for me as a taxpayer here to want to support it, but it needs to be implemented in a thoughtful manner. We have had years to follow the example of other cities who have done such a better job of taking care of their trees. We put giant trees, a little tiny tree wells, and get upset with them for breaking the sidewalk. The trees that are going to be removed in this program are going to be large canopy trees that provide significant carbon sequestering and shade benefits. And I would hope that in this plan, which isn't even described in this initial report, you put a great deal of thought into how we're going to implement this plan, and at every tree that is designated to be removed, be given an environmental value before it's removed, and we plant enough trees after that tree is removed to match that environmental value, whether it's carbon sequestering or shade. It is not two for one, two tiny trees for one giant tree. We need to do this in a thoughtful and productive manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment portion of this joint committee meeting. Defer to, we have questions now. If I can now defer to Mr. Santana for the questions that were filled out on the index cards earlier, and you can answer those questions.
Certainly. There's a number of questions, and I'll try to address them all in groupings, because there were a number of questions about who pays for it ultimately. And one specific question was ultimately, is the federal government going to pay for it? So to be clear, the city is making, under the will at settlement, a minimum commitment of $31 million. The settlement itself doesn't establish how that's going to be paid. So should there be an assessment later on, sometimes within the next 30 years, that could help cover that cost? That obviously would need to be voted on by the people if there would be some kind of assessment. If there were to be a stimulus program 20 years from now, like the one we experienced recently, committed towards infrastructure, and there would be federal grants, that could cover it. At the end of the day, the City General Fund is the backstop for that contribution. So should there be no other source of funds, the City General Fund is ultimately responsible for ensuring that cost. And again, the $31 million is the minimum. Future councils could certainly make a much larger contribution if funds become available. When I specifically referenced potentially bonding, I wasn't speaking to an assessment. There are different kinds of bonds. A GO bond is one that is required that the voters vote on and support. The city could use the commitment it's making of the general fund and borrow against it so that the work can be done faster. And so that would be a decision that would be made by future councils if there would be a robust enough program and a demand from the public that more work be done upfront. The litigation doesn't require that, but it doesn't prohibit that either. There were a number of questions surrounding liability, and to be clear, there are really two areas that are important to point out. The first is, again, the state law that is referenced in the document that you have, where it's established by the state of California that the sidewalks are, in fact, the responsibility of the property owner. That is, that applies anywhere in the state. That is the law. And so what the city is committing on residential properties under this proposal is that if the residential property has a sidewalk that is not accessible, then the city would fix that sidewalk, and then ultimately certify that and hand that certification to the property owner. Now, there's another regulation related to accessibility for the disabled, and there are a number of laws at the state level, at the federal level, for the disabled community. Property owners, commercial property owners, including multi-family commercial property owners, have a responsibility under state and federal law, under the ADA, to ensure accessibility to their properties. So if your property serviced the public in any way, that includes whether it's a for-profit or a nonprofit, if it provides access to renters, particularly if there's access for affordable housing, there is a specific requirement under the ADA to ensure that your property is accessible. That is beyond the state law, which establishes that the property is your, the sidewalk is the property owner's responsibility. So as it relates to liability, currently today, property owners are liable for their sidewalks. Now, the city gets sued ultimately, and we pay a lot in settlements on an annual basis, because the city does not have a program. So people who sue, ultimately sue the city, because the city is the deep pocket. And so ultimately, when the city establishes a program, that liability will be reduced. And that's in response to a number of questions related to ultimate liability. There was this question specifically to, related to bankruptcy, should a commercial property owner file bankruptcy? Ultimately, under the proposal, that sidewalk will be made accessible. And if a commercial property owner refuses to be in compliance with the policy, then the city will do the work itself and ultimately place a lien on the property itself, so that the amount that was used to cover that cost is ultimately paid for when that property gets sold. There were a number of questions on how the work itself will be done, whether there would be opportunities for minority and women-owned businesses. Of course, the city will encourage all businesses, particularly minority and women-owned businesses, to get certified, so they could be hired by contractors. And should the city choose to privatize that work, then of course, the city has long established a policy and practice of encouraging minority and owned businesses to participate. There are a number of questions specific to trees and how the trees would be handled. And again, the Board of Public Works has recently adopted a set of policies pertaining to the protection of trees and the replacement of trees. And so I advise you to visit the Board of Public Works website and find out specifically about what that policy is, and we'll make sure that it's also linked to the CAO website related to sidewalks, because it's quite nuanced, and the kind of tree it is, the age of the tree, the extent that it does provide an environmental benefit, as was discussed, is all placed into consideration in the establishment of that policy. As it relates to enforcement, the enforcement, that question that was asked, whether ultimately the city will make this contribution, by entering to the settlement, the city is making a contractual commitment to commit $1.4 billion towards this program. And so that is the ultimate enforcement. If the city in the future fails to meet that obligation, then the plaintiffs have the right to go back to court and have the court mandate that the city fulfill its commitment as determined by the settlement itself. There was, again, wanting to clarify in terms of the length of time. This is ultimately being proposed, a 30-year commitment, but the goal here is to have a policy that far exceeds the 30 years. So the $1.4 billion is to be spent over a 30-year period, so that one particular generation is in burden, and with 100% of that responsibility is going to be done over a significant period of time. There was also a question about the quality of the sidewalk and how it would be left once it's fixed, particularly if a tree is left intact. As part of the policy we are recommending, the city is guaranteeing that the sidewalk will be accessible for a minimum of five years. So that would determine ultimately how that tree is preserved. If, the goal again is to prune the roots so that that tree can be preserved and the sidewalk can be accessible, so that both goals are met. But ultimately, if the city cannot guarantee accessibility within a five-year period and still maintain that tree, unfortunately, that tree will have to be removed. That generally covers most of the questions that were asked. There were a couple of questions pertaining to specific locations in the San Fernando Valley, and for those, we recommend that you contact your council member directly or call the 3-1-1 system to ensure that those sidewalks are addressed. Miguel, I just want to make one brief comment on the issue of ensuring accessibility as a priority over the retention of trees. There are going to be situations, certainly-
Um, there are going to be situations, certainly, where that conflict is irreconcilable. And in that case, the ADA and the provision of the settlement will mandate that access have priority. But I, I, for one, and I think most of my colleagues, don't accept the notion that that conflict is always reconcil- irreconcilable. And I think that, um, Mr. Bloomingfield and others have spoken, uh, frequently and forcefully about the need to explore alternative, uh, construction materials, um, and designs. Um, we also, uh, I think, need to explore the opportunity of, um, having sidewalks, uh, divert from their current course in certain circumstances. I don't think there's any reason that we need to be committed to having, uh, four-inch-thick slabs of concrete in a straight line down every residential block when we might have sidewalks that meander around a significant mature tree, for example. Those are some of the design elements that will have to be, now, this is gonna be hard stuff to work into a, an ordinance and a design, but I think we're gonna have to count heavily on our staff in implementing this to find ways that we can reconcile the continuing existence of the urban forest along with ensuring full accessibility at the same time.
Mr. Corian, there are two questions that I, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't get to answer. There was one specific question on whether the curbs will be replaced, uh, in addition to the sidewalk where the curbs are not, um, in good, in a good condition. And the answer is yes, that everything that's required to ensure that that sidewalk is accessible and accessible for a period of time will be part of the replacement under the Fix and Release Program. And there was also a question regarding, uh, areas where currently sidewalks do not exist. Uh, there are a number of neighborhoods throughout the city where the original development did not place sidewalks. Under the settlement, the city is not mandated to put a sidewalk where it currently does not exist, but it also does not prohibit that from taking place.
That's great.
That's it?
That's all the questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, um, why don't we take this, uh, moment, since we have heard all of the cards and, and the questions, uh, let's give an opportunity to the council members who've not had an opportunity to weigh in and offer comments yet. Let's start with Mr. Kretz.
Well, just to, to follow up on Mr. Corian's comments, I think this will actually be the, the biggest issue we deal with in the course of doing these sidewalks is how we handle the trees. And we know there are trees with strong enough root systems that we've, because we, we still have seen them throughout the city, where we cut out some of the roots under the sidewalk, replace the sidewalk, but leave the trees. So the question is, uh, you know, how detailed can our, our policies be so that we are sure that we remove very few trees? Because our, probably a bigger problem than our sidewalk condition is climate change. And, uh, one factor will be how many trees and how much canopy we're, we're able to, to leave. And especially if we use contractors. We haven't really had great experiences with a lot of our tree contractors. Um, a lot of our trees have been somewhat slaughtered where we do get them done. So it's, it's an unfortunate situation where people complain when they're not trimmed, but now people are complaining when they are trimmed. So I, I would certainly encourage us, as part of this process, to move back towards, uh, having a, a mostly internal force of tree trimmers that are considerably more capable and knowledgeable. Uh, I think that'll really be the key to, to doing this project over the next 30 years.
Thank you. Mr. Ru?
Yeah, I wanna first thank, um, our chairs, Councilman Paul Corian, Chair of Budget and Finance, and Councilmember Joe Buscagno of Public Works, for taking the leadership and doing these hearings, um, citywide. Um, this is the fifth one that you guys have done. Um, I've been fortunate to attend three, but you, you've sat through all five. Um, I commend you on that. But most importantly, I wanna thank the audience for coming out, taking time out of your busy schedule to share your ideas and your thoughts. I came a little late, but I have two staff here who took, took some copious notes and will be sharing that with me. Um, I took lots of notes throughout the other hearings as well. And I look forward to going back to the city council to sharing with my colleagues all the, uh, input and feedback that we heard from you. Thank you so much, and we'll work on a great, um, strategy and protocol with the CAO and the rest of the city family to make sure that we, um, get our sidewalks fixed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ru. Mr. Bloomingfield, anything further? All right. Uh, well, we, we all wanna thank you all very much for coming out, uh, today. I think, as you've heard, the members of the public wrestling with some of the issues that we've had to wrestle. You've heard some of the questions, all excellent questions. Um, this seems like it should be the kind of issue that should be the simplest thing in the world. It's just laying concrete. How hard can that be? Uh, but as you see, as we've started to discuss this, you see the complexity of it and how each policy decision we make touches upon so many other issues as well that deal with equity and sustainability and cost effectiveness and environmental, uh, impacts and, uh, impacts on our elderly and disabled community and so many other things. So, um, I appreciate very much your engagement. I urge you to continue to engage in, uh, helping us to shape this policy. Um, for those of you who mentioned that you were taking pictures of broken sidewalks and putting them up on a website, that's terrific. And I would urge all of the rest of you, as you identify, uh, places that are especially egregious in your communities, first of all, report them. Report them right now, even though we're, you know, this policy is not done. Report them to 311. Because those areas that have, um, the greatest degree of reporting of, of problems are, that process will figure into the prioritization of, of getting this work done. And I would also urge you to, um, approach your neighborhood councils. And those of you who are neighborhood council leaders, um, please begin that inventorying process. Start it right now. Identify the places that you believe to be the biggest priorities within your neighborhood council jurisdiction so that, uh, we can have the benefit of your input as we move forward in trying to identify what is the worst of the worst and what will get done, uh, quickest. So, uh, with that, we wanna thank you all very, very much for your participation. And if there's nothing further, members, we are adjourned.